Evening, everybody. Welcome to the May meeting of the Lower Southford Planning Commission. Meeting's called Order First Order of Businesses Review of the Minutes from April. Apparently it should happen in their packet or electronically. Any additions, modifications? Hearing none, I'm motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First agenda item is Lead Rock Frost Road Development Cheyenne.
Your part.
Thanks. Appreciate the fact.
I'm Anthony Brock, of course, still consulting. You're the charge partner. This is for a six-unit development. Bottom block, perhaps block west of the six-way intersection, the Lead Rock Village. We've seen this a couple of times before. We were last here at the end of January, I believe. And at that time, yes, it's like a couple of clarifications on the plane. Show the truck turning templates a little more clearly, show the site trims that we discussed at the meeting. We tended to put together a little bit of a better landscape plan for you to look at as well. Other than that, the plan really hasn't changed since the last time we were here. Generally, I was the same, a couple of minor tweaks around the drivers, I think, is all. So you have something you want to discuss before I get into waivers? You can do that now. Or I don't really have any engineering comments that I think are worth discussing from Stephanie, Claire, or Michelle. Unless they have something in particular they wanted to bring up.
I just want to point out that the last time we were here, as Anthony said, you stated that you wanted to see more detailed landscaping plan, which they have provided more details. Maybe you could go into a little better description on what you added.
So we clarified what's going on on top of the wall. There's a retaining wall proposed along the backside of the property, behind that loop driveway. And we looked at putting some landscaping in above the wall and below the wall. Softened the active face of the block wall that was in there. I'll be the first to admit that this plan is a little more refined, I think, than we will, you know, as we get to the final. Plans provide a little better detail, especially around the building and areas like that. I think there's room for additional small trees, shrubs, things like that. One of the waivers we were asking for was street trees that were required along the southerly access drive. That's an emergency access drive. I think it's eleven trees we were short. Actually, it's both sides of that driveway and also the east side of the main driveway across the road. It's been suggested that we pay a fee in lieu or try to plant those eleven trees for sure. Elsewhere in the township, we're on the site. I think we're willing to do that for now. Anthony is moving forward.
And what's the wall?
Just a retaining wall. It's about two, six feet, I think, maximum. So probably average four feet. It'd be a block wall. Segmented block wall, picture it. Split, split brick face kind of thing. Something that will be designed by another engineer at our firm. So we provide all those details to Michelle for review before approval. I think not sure what year they are in, so I'll just look at that setting.
Want to talk about the fence, Tim?
Yeah, we had a comment from Michelle. We had shown, I think, in detail, showing a chain link fence at the top of the wall for safety. There's also a guard rail proposed where cars have been driving. It's that we can replace the chain link fence with, you know, like a split rail fence, something like that. It's typical in this situation. If we're having to do that, or a split rail fence with a mesh covering on it, it's a bit a little safer.
This isn't the finished landscape plan? You said you're still working on it?
It's in progress. But we're showing more than we were last time, particularly, particularly around the wall area. Add some screening on the backside of the property there.
Well, I would think we wouldn't want to comment on waivers for plants.
We're not asking for waivers necessarily, but at the end of the point in time. The one waiver was for street trees.
Right.
And those were required along the both access driveways, not streets. The driveway requires that. So we were asking for a waiver mainly due to space limitations along the east side of the driveway and along the access for the emergency access drive from 113. So the compromise, I think, that was suggested was to provide the deficient trees somewhere else in the township or a fee in lieu of those trees. Or we consider, you know, planting extra vegetation on the site to kind of make up for those deficiencies.
So don't, don't love the idea of a chain link fence. I under-
I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, I understand if split rail creates some sort of safety issues. We think somebody will go between the rails and fall off the walls. And then I would think, yeah, maybe some sort of like a black vinyl, sort of like a pool surround fence.
Yeah, and we could do any of those options.
Yeah. So let's, let's, let's understand what the fence could look like because chain link. Small rail may not be sufficient and-
Well, we see it like a black vinyl chain.
Yeah.
People, people don't like that, I don't.
And then I think when you were here last time, there was also, we talked about trash truck and fire truck movements and the thought that it might not be able to navigate all of those turns.
Yeah, there's a clarification that was needed on, I think, the turning plans. Submitted were a little hard to read, a little fuzzy. We provided updated plans that will colorize to some extent to show the wheel path more accurately. I don't know if you have a chance to review that.
Yeah, because the first ones had the truck turning. I think the wheels were up on the wall and stuff like that.
It looked like that, but they actually weren't. Clarify that. And we did tweak one at the lower corner there, which I think was over top of the curb.
But the ones that are in here, would you say accurate?
Yes.
But, but I believe you also have to show the movements in turn off the study, also to make sure that you can make those.
We were showing into our movements on the land open plans. I don't think they were on the Penn Dot plan.
Where did we end up signing up for the trash? Because I know that was something we were gonna figure out. That particular truck movement, how we're gonna come in and exit the site.
Yeah, we're proposing forty-five foot deep garages in each unit. Five foot space on the back of that garage is reserved for trash, toters. Those kind of things that we goofed out to the back of the houses, you know, for trash pickup day. Michelle suggested and we agreed that the HOA documents would require those trash bins to be stored inside the garages.
But we've done that in developments that all have driveways, the trash can goes at the end of the driveway. Where would the trash can get put out of trash?
The truck will come into the site to collect the trash. So they were just gonna have to move the toters out to the back of the houses. And there's parking spots behind each driveway or behind each unit. I think they could just put the toters out at the end of those parking spaces along the drive aisle. On trash pickup day.
I'm sure we've seen that before. So you're saying in front of the garage store? Say if the garages are here?
Well, they would pick up out at the end of those parking spaces. Closer to the on-drive aisle.
I think at the very least, I think we probably want some sort of a line motivating the driver along the parking lane. So one, the truck knows where it's going to. The people know where to put the containers. Because if not, you're gonna have someone sitting too far in, you have someone sitting out in the traffic.
Yeah.
So you just got to think about that.
We're responsible for the trash was accessible to the trash truck. We're not getting the trash picked up. We could with strike being like six parking spaces, the town spaces, we could strike behind the garages to delineate where those spaces are.
Yeah.
That would help.
E- even maybe just like a solid white line that just at the end of the island, the peninsula's there cutting across and sort of says, okay, here's the end of it, and they just kind of know.
Yep.
Questions?
Yeah, I thought when you were in here before, we had talked about emergency access and a fire hydrant down right when you turn into the property.
We did not talk about a fire hydrant.
And the other thing was putting a fire hydrant back in the the loopish area back in there. And it looks like now you're, you have an individual water line for each building running from 113 all the way back and through the site in each building.
Right.
Well, can you put a stub of a water line in the emergency access to get it far enough in so a truck can make it in there and put a hydrant there and then run water lines from there back?
The services are configured how North Penn Water wanted us to show that. That's why they're showing that way. You talk to them about options you could provide a fire hydrant there.
All right. Well, I think they will go along with this.
Yeah.
So you have no problem with changing this?
I don't think we have any problem with that. For a hydrant.
And the other thing would be, since there isn't one in the turnaround or whatever you call this area in here, could we have one, either the one that's out there now towards the five points moved up or put an additional one as close as possible to five points? So the trucks then could go out crossroads, laying a line to the other end of the two, the four buildings at the main entrance coming in off a crossroads. But there's no water line out there.
That's the issue. There's no water line.
Right, right. But that's why we like one up here, because then has a straight shot coming in. Otherwise, there's one back by the dance studio or back up that way where we'd have to use that and it would shut down the entire five points intersection. Nightmare. And the water line is right there now. So it'd be just a tap into that line.
There is one on.
113.
113, right, yeah.
So if we could get one as close as possible on 113 towards Cross Road.
Okay.
Do you prefer like the corner or?
Well, if it's at the dead, dead on the corner, it may get hit.
Right. About to say, do I prefer here or do you prefer here?
For them, it would be easier. Well, this is already set up in there. We can work, make it work with it here. Because then we have a straight shot in and we got this one moved in here. So we're gonna outside. So I guess it's a compromise.
Yeah. Shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
You do have right away, correct?
Well, the water line's underneath there as it is. So I guess there'd be some right away. Because all they'd have to do is just tap into the current.
I just almost typed what the existing building was there on the corner, the MRI building.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be an issue.
And if you want, we can talk in North Penn Water and happen.
Yeah, we'll call it that.
Any other open issues for you or any other questions from the committee?
After reading.
Okay. All right. So next time we'll see the depiction of the wall fence. Well, if you don't have enough, that's fine. But I definitely want to see what that's gonna look like down.
We provided with the plan plan.
Okay.
Especially the recommendation tonight. Make sure what else is outstanding. Besides that, that to me, that's an engineering issue. Something that's more revealing, but.
Bring in whatever you want.
I can change, but you just got to cycle through. I think we do have a plan.
Questions from the audience? All right. So everybody knows the drill by now. Name, address, speak clearly for us and make it a question pertaining to the plan as opposed to an overall statement of how you feel about developing the township. Fair enough?
Tricia White, 781 Sharon Lee. Is it possible, I apologize, I've not been here previously, for you to come over and kind of give us a like point out where the things are you're speaking of. I'm understanding this is hardly so tight. First question would be how close are you to the entrance to Cheswick on that road?
This is at five points.
Yeah, so the, the-
Oh, but he's closer to me than I realized then.
So the piano bar is on the, the northern side right there. Yep. That's Cross Road coming off of 113, so. So why don't you just give a quick orientation where you are, where the main entrance is, where the supplemental entrance is?
Well, that's what I said. This is the five-point intersection, five-point intersection. To the west of that on Cross Road. Four hundred feet, five hundred feet. Those are the new driveway. Where the cursor is, that's a two-way driveway proposed. Parked in the back of three twin homes. Also, six units would be totally built there. One garage in each unit, parking behind the units, some shared parking. Will be the sixth space that you're seeing in the middle, north of the Green Island. Those are the common spaces. The other access we're showing off of Route 113 would be a block off, emergency access only, used by emergency personnel, fire trucks, things like that. This project would relocate the existing residential driveway that you're seeing on the house on 113 over to share the access with the emergency driveway. Making it a little safer for that resident. How many of yours wasn't in property? Moved away from the intersection a little bit farther.
My correct understanding that there's an entrance on the floor.
On 113, we're just moving the existing residential entrance, single house, it would just be on the far right of the planning.
When you talk far and what are you talking about?
What's your question? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to understand where the entrances are. And I understand it was just very close to the Cheswick development. I had to turn, but it's there.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, you're probably- Hold your question. We'll get to that plan later. This is about a mile and a half from you. This is in the middle of Lead Rock by the Bay Pony Inn.
Yes, that's where I live.
Okay.
I cross road is-
You kept saying Cheswick, so that's why. So the main, main access is on Cross Road. The access on 113 is emergency.
Just before, right? That's, that's you are.
Ma'am?
I don't remember. So that's the, there to be honest. Where are these line houses and building those? I don't understand. There's no open lot there.
With the block, certainly.
The corner house, yeah.
Yeah, there's actually two open lots. One is a flag lot, currently takes access from Harley's Little Pike. I think it's at the bottom right of our development. And there's a larger open lot, most of the parking in the two buildings are shown. We're combining two of those lots together.
And then you're putting six houses in there, townhouses?
Three twin houses.
What kind of houses?
Twin.
Yeah. Okay, I just didn't understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what was the question for Sharon? Is Sharon?
Sharon's. A mile away.
Can I run this? Is the city a local?
Yes.
Out of the five points intersection.
Sharon's on the side of the side. Yeah, there. That's Sharon. I'll go back up and I can show her again where the lot is.
Any other questions?
No.
Name, address.
How far is it from 113? I never done.
The least well, four to five hundred feet. Close to 400.
Just gonna make a comment. This may be a traffic nightmare.
We have, okay, we discussed this with the planning. We should previously remove that access as far from the intersection as possible. We know there's-
And five hundred feet is as far as possible?
It's less than five hundred feet.
I'm Lori Young Gina for 70 West Big Circle. And I just wanted, I didn't hear the name of yourself, the presenter. What's your name and your position?
Anthony Brock. So what did you do?
I just wanted to, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll see you when you're ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Is there any limitation that enters my front with any Lower Southford regulation? Where that distance, the minimum distance, yes?
There are cyclist's requirements in driveways. Based on speed or traffic coming towards the driveways, leaving driveways. Subtletory by Penn Dot as well, the state roads. We need to have approvals from them as well.
And the distance from 113, you're maybe not regulating?
Yes.
The 113, you'll have to do a Penn Dot across road here as well?
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
So the question is, what are you looking for, like recommendation in area? At this point.
So what, what do you, you mean, most, most developers want preliminary final, so?
We're perfectly fine to do that.
Okay.
We're all set.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if you get this cleaned up, then we'll see the final waiver list.
Okay.
On the sort of the final landscape, the turning radius and the fence.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was kind of done, but okay. That was me closing him out.
I need that right, 13 and then keep returning that to the doors. We're talking about it in a standstill. Those pretty thoughts of putting in a left-hand turn?
Oh, did we? That would have to be Penn Dot redesigning that intersection. We couldn't. Yeah, I, you know, I was in my way all the time. So I go along by infer, so.
That's a great statistic.
Hopefully not the same person that did the mainland by nets. All right, now the sewer module. Who's doing the sewer?
Yeah, we put your sewer module on for tonight.
What did he review?
The component 4A. The component 4A was submitted to you. I'll, I'll start you. The component 4A was submitted to the planning commission tonight. The component 4A has to be reviewed by the municipal planning commission stating that the questions are on the 4A and it basically asks you as a planning body whether or not this land development adheres to the zoning requirements, which we now believe it does. We have just two comments in their review letter about an agreement that would be needed and agreement, that two agreements that would be needed and whether or not it meets the subdivision land development ordinance, which we can't say it does yet because you, the board and neither you have looked at the waiver requests. But we are suggesting, since they submitted the planning module, that you attach our review letter to it to notify DEP. What is outstanding regarding?
So a bunch of curious people. Why don't you explain that this doesn't give any approval for land development, but it starts the process with regard to DEP and capacity?
Do you want that? Do you know anyone?
That was very well stated.
So the municipality has a plan that is required by the Department of Environmental Protection that states, that has to state for every municipality where there is supposed, where there is going to be public sewer and where there is going to be online septic systems. This development is in an area that is planned to be publicly sewed. In order for them to get DEP approval, they first have to get municipal approval. They have to get approval from the Bucks, Montgomery County Health Department and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Once, and then they have to get signatures from the collection, conveyance and treatment facilities stating that they have capacity to service this property. This is the first step where they have to come to the local planning commission to get signature saying that this development meets the zoning and the subdivision land development ordinance. It is only for their proposed public sewers. It is no way land development approval at all. So that's why they're here tonight.
You need a motion to approve that only, right?
Motion to authorize Mike to sign on your behalf.
I'll motion for him to sign on our behalf.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I'll get it too.
Okay. Well, we're, we're ahead of schedule. 488 Harley's Little Pike. Let's dive into the packet or email from Kim too. Name, title.
My name is Selsa Lee. I'm an attorney with Hamburg Rubin Mall Maxwell and Lupin. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client. We're leading Conservative Partners. Group, excuse me, group, L P. My client has been before this planning commission before, so I'm not gonna belabor you guys with too much background. Could we shift the old side panel up for a moment?
Sure thing.
Thank you. So the septic property consists of a little over nine acres, located on part of the Bill Pike State Route on 13. It's located with the R4 medium density mixed dwelling district. Triplexes, wads, townhomes, they're permitted by right as a deuce in that district. Previously, my client had provided you with this sketch plan, which had thirty-six homes that utilized a density bonus that plants up there on the screen. That old plan envisioned a more intensive residential use of the property. You'll note the residential units were spread over a larger area, area, and they were much closer to the residential neighbors up there. Now, since our last appearance before the planning commission, we've revised our plan based on prior feedback and our conversations with the township's consultants. We have a copy of the new plan on screen, Mike. Here. Thank you. So we basically cut about twenty-five percent of the residential units that were there. It's a total of ten. The residential units are now more closely clustered together towards the center of the property. They're further away from the residential neighbors. As I understand it, the Montgomery County Planning Commission's reviewed the plan and believes that it's generally consistent with both the county comprehensive plan and the Indian Valley Regional Comprehensive Plan. Also note that the county planning commission's review letter noted that this area is designated for growth under those plans. So we're in possession of the Township Engineers' most recent review letter that's May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and also the Bowman Traffic Review Letter dated May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. I believe most of those matters are going to be resolved at the engineering level or in the design phase of the project, but I did want to highlight a couple of matters for you guys tonight. The first is going to be the issue of connectivity. Could you scroll down just a little bit, please? And could scroll a little bit, right? Thank you. Now that red rectangular area towards the bottom, that's the active recreation area. So the first issue we do want to talk about is going to be the issue of connectivity. That current plan shows that that's about point four six acres of active recreation area. In lieu of that, you'll note that there's a trail that runs up to that area. We'd like to extend that trail to the adjoining property in order to connect it to another trail that was going to come up so that we can ultimately connect it to a trail system that would lead to Alderford Park. The second's going to be the right ways is what we'd like to talk about. Would like to go the narrower cartway of twenty-six to twenty-eight feet and a right away and no more than thirty. We agree with the county review letter that the reduced size of the street is probably going to calm traffic and it's also going to lead to less impervious coverage. The third is going to be-
That road is a private road, right?
Yes, that is the intent. There won't be a homeowner's, excuse me, a, some sort of association there.
Yep.
The third is going to be the issue of traffic as it relates to Harley's Little Pike. Part of our problem there is when we're dealing with that particular issue, a lot of those issues are gonna, our hands are gonna be tied by our conversation with Penn Dot. So with all of that in mind, the fact that we've significantly reduced the total number of residential units. So with all of that in mind, the fact that we've significantly reduced the total number of residential units. Um, and we're trying to provide additional buffering for the neighbors, I do have my engineer here and. Believe that Anna will be able to, uh, provide you with, with answers to any additional questions if you guys have them.
That previous plan wasn't approved, that was an initial submission.
I believe that was scheduled.
So when you say you're reducing the numbers, it's not like you're reducing something that existed. It was just, it was just something.
Yes, so our proposal has, we've reduced it.
This looks very tight to me, I'm just a little bit concerned, um. That, if that was, if you look at that, it's the bulk of that building, that's a large building, right there. I'm assuming, Mike, that you, you know, it's going to meet the township. Size requirements.
Would defer to. Sales letter.
Yeah, what do you mean by the size requirements, those uses are allowed for the ordinance.
And but the size of one building. I didn't look at it myself, but I'm just asking, like the length and size of the bulk of those buildings, are there?
They, they, well. This is just a sketch plan, it's not a preliminary plan, so they haven't talked about impervious coverage. Or really setbacks per se, but there is no, um, maximum length or maximum. Well, there's a, a maximum width at each unit, there's a maximum, um. Length of the building that they have to adhere to and, um, those need it for now.
Have a maximum length.
Right, one more question, are the cul-de-sacs actually to standard? I mean, can a truck, uh, large trucks can get in there and turn around, get out? And will there be like no parking, or what's to stop people from, uh, parking those areas?
That is no parking, they will be putting no parking signs, uh, I'm sorry, my name is Anan, but I'm a, I'm an engineering, I'm a civil engineer, uh. As, uh, Celsius pro- proposed, uh, uh, we are. Proposing no parking on the street, we have thirteen, a pair of parking spaces for visitors. Uh, and all the other parking would be in the drivers.
Okay, the, the cul-de-sac just look small compared to.
It's forty two feet radius, and which is meets the plot.
Okay.
Out here, because it's a private road, you have no parking stop. Is it enforceable? Is, don't enforce it.
It, it, it can be, I'm not a lawyer, but it can be. It can be if we require it to be on the record plan and they allow us to have that restriction. On, on the plan, I'm sure Larry's going to have something to say about me being a lawyer.
That, even if it's. We have no parking, and it can be enforced by the municipal police department, we've done that in other occasions.
So the visitor or the parking, the parallel parking along them.
Correct, yes.
So. Talk to me a little bit, I see what you've done with landscaping, talk to me about Birmingham screening and how you're sort of going to de-intensify this to the surrounding neighbors.
That's a great question, uh, we are required to have fifteen feet of buffer around the perimeter buffer around the property. Uh, intensity of the buffering changes with the use, uh, adjacent to the property. They, adjacent, uh, I would say that. To the northwest of the property, there are single family dwelling, that's a medium density, uh, buffering. Which requires, um, total of nine trees to distribute, uh, five evergreens and two ornamental trees. To be provided every hundred feet, and that's what we are proposing, the, the property on the southern edge or the eastern edge. Is. Is a twins or the dash units, that is low density buffering we, we are required and what we show here is. Means or exceeds the standards for the, for the buffering.
So. I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, I understand the by right element of what you're allowed to do here. Um, given that we're kind of shoehorning it in the midst of a bunch of existing developments. I, I want you to try to see if you can find a way, we shouldn't see this. Between Birmingham on the left side as you come in and Birmingham on one thirteen. I, I, I think you can honestly find a way to make this, you know. Almost invisible to the neighborhood, and I think you should try to set that as the goal. Um, I know it'll be hard because you don't have a ton of room right there, but you can see this on the swimming pools and everything. What, what can we do to create burms, plannings, so that it's not just plants that look good six months out of the year? Figure out how to like sort of make it, and, and, let me, let me just finish. I'm really not worried about whether the financial guys, you know, their view is good or not, like they, they, they are where they are. So just think about whatever you're required from a landscape standpoint. Should really be oriented towards the adjacent residential and the traffic on one thirteen.
Uh, and I understand and I agree with you, there is a requirement or the stipulation in the code that. Allows us to replace the ornamental and distributed trees which are six months of the, of a year. There, we will replace them with evergreens, shouldn't be a problem with us. Uh, Birmingham is a great idea, we can certainly do so and try to. Minimize the impact, okay, we cannot just completely not see, want people to see, but it's, it's minimizing the impact.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can get, I mean, you gotta work within the slopes, right, but if you can get. In that section on the left-hand side, if you could get a four-foot berm with evergreens on top. Now you can create, you know, true screening that makes it.
That is possible, okay, that's. Absolutely, thank you.
And the bottom end also vanishes, because you got people down at the bottom also to live or on.
Yeah.
Yes, same thing there, it should be buffer that they don't have to look at that.
And, and at some point they're going to run out of plannings, so it's not that I'm, uh. And, and no offense to anybody that's here, it's not that I'm less concerned about the people on the right-hand side. But their view is not going to change very much, right, today they look at the packed pasture, and today in the future they're going to look at open space. But the residents that are surrounding the left-hand side, that's where the visual approach is, and I'd really like to see we emphasize the screen there.
But all the people who live on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, from. The orange box to the right, their view doesn't change that. Which, I, you know, I still want to put some screenings there, I'm understanding, let's concentrate it where the word, yep.
I think buffering is the most important element there, but I would also hope that as, as the plan moves along, we'd like to see shade trees. In the area where the new, the new pavement is, because that heat is.
Absolutely, business, so you're correct on that, this plan only shows the buffering along the private ground, it does not show the landscaping, which will be required to provide.
And, and on the, the, up on one thirteen, I think you've got lots of room there, I even think that. Um, I think your customers would appreciate it if they're not looking at one thirteen. And just like we've done with a lot of the other cluster developments in the township, when you pull it away from the road and then you create the buffering there, then, then. Desensitizes you to the, you know, the traffic and, and everything that's going on, so I think you got more than enough room to create Birmingham and screening up along one thirteen. Um, and then I guess. Shell question, I'm looking at a couple of the driveways that take access off of the cul-de-sacs. How does, how do we review those, remains a question for Stephanie, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at some of the angles, like. The sixth townhouse on the top side, you know, they're, they're kind of coming into their driveway with a hard left.
Yeah, uh, and, and Stephanie could correct anything I say if she's still there, but we're, we're. We're really going to look at the slope coming in, but that's the only way to get access into that unit. So we'll make sure that they meet the, um, maximum, uh, minimum slope rea- maximum slope requirements, um, for those driveways.
Just looking at it, I would say I feel like there's three to four too many houses in there. Because the first one, as you make the left. Um, into, whatever it's called, yes, so the very first one. Um, right there, yep, that driveway is super close to the stop sign. And then back on the cul-de-sac, the last two left and right. And then ultimately, the, the other reason why I'd like to see the screening is the four units down to the bottom. That fourth one right there, I, I'd really like to see how you're going to screen. Cause that's the one that, that feels like it could go away. And I, I, I wouldn't even be opposed, I don't think you can do it because of the water. But, you know, if you move that one up and made it one of the other three units. Um. I think that would even be preferable, can you flip the three and four right there?
Uh, yes, we can.
You'll have the minimum room distance between the buildings?
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at it, but I, if, if we need to, we believe that there are four, it's a longer run along the cul-de-sac as you see. Rather than a strong, straight run what we have here, so it's better to have the way we have it, but we can certainly take a look at it.
If, if, if you would, because my, my concern is, I'd like the walking path. But if you put the walking path there, you make it very difficult to put a berm. If you can't put a berm, then the intensity between that and the existing neighbors can't be mitigated. So if you can do the three and the four, maybe you got a ways to put a little more screening buffering.
Sure, and again, I think, uh, Michelle's letter has clearly noted, and I think we agree with that, that the, what, the path should be moved closer to that. Uh, the new proposed houses compared to where the, the existing houses are, so that will give us more. And, and more, basically.
Are there other, um, develop- developments in this area with the tight spaced driveways? In that configuration, I, I find that looks very awkward.
Um, I was probably seeing a couple of them, maybe the, the Southwood School Development, that's, they may be tighter.
Yeah, I want them.
Post Office.
Right, the High Point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a couple that are at least that.
Another question, Shane.
Uh, that'll be the normal bike path width and all that, is it?
Yes, A B Y, yes.
Is, uh, is that an emergency exit off the back of the cul-de-sac going out back at the one thirteen?
You're right.
All right, standard rules apply. Any questions from the audience?
The entrance, the entrance really appears, but the exit, the entrance, only because it's, we are exlocated. And there's so much traffic coming in and out of Meeting House Road now, going across. Is there going to be any intention in the future to put a light there or something? Because it's, it really is with crossroad, what you're, what you're doing in crossroad and lead rack, coming down there. It's really going to be an idea, I think you're going to hear a lot more, you know, but, um. That's my main question. Um, and you answered my other question, I think on the, it's an emergency. On the right-hand side, so that means nobody comes in on one thirteen and goes in there unless it's a fire or whatever. The other thing is, I'm not quite identified here for enough. How many in each of those two rooms, is it likely one on south? By the post office, or is it, is, is it more high density?
So, good question, uh, there are three different types of units, there are triplexes, which is three units. Water flex, which are four units, and there are townhouses which had six units, so there are.
Well, just make sure you're being clear, so he's talking about, there's, there's the two sexes. And then there were threes and fours, each unit though is only one domicile. No, no, that's what I thought you were, yeah. So it's going to be what, twenty-three units, totally. And, and just back to your original question slash comment. The location of the driveway across from Meeting House was based on feedback, a prior submission proposal had gotten from Penn Dot. As that's where they wanted it, so that's kind of being dictated to us, we had actually been trying to push it a little bit further north at one point. Um, Penn Dot specified where they wanted it, and whether or not a light goes in will be entirely based on traffic count, so there. They routinely assess all intersections in the township and come back and tell us which ones meet warrants and therefore they want a traffic light, so that won't be our call either.
Thank you.
Sir.
Well, and I'm questioning that, we reached out and, uh, there's no way. Yeah. You guys may notice, and I put that road there, yes, we even, uh, believe Stephanie can confirm it, she, uh, told us on the. Was at the meeting, the scoping meeting, after, I guess, Stephanie.
Yes, I'm here. I didn't hear the entire question though, so please repeat it.
They have no record, anybody, no way to find the way to. Eight hundred feet down to two hundred thirty eight feet. Is that been actually, and not approved that?
Um, I have email chain from the representatives in the traffic unit who reviewed the scoping. Um, application that was submitted prior to this, um. You know, when it was submitted previously, um. I do not believe this plan, Anan, has been submitted as a scoping. Um, application to Penn Dot currently, is that true?
And that is true, Stephanie, but the access remains the same exact location very good.
Yes, agreed, so in the prior. Plan, um, Penn Dot did render a decision from the traffic unit, so I'm not sure who you. Uh, particularly spoke with, but the traffic unit is responsible, um, for. Reviewing anything related to highway occupancy permit, um, projects that are along state roads. Um. And a lot of times what will happen, there'll be some preliminary communication or email communication. Uh, but it won't have necessarily been a formal application, um, but they did render that decision and I do have. Um, that email correspondence from those representatives.
Yeah, you're gonna access those emails, because.
Um, I can share them with the, I can share them with the township and, and Mike, you can. I guess.
I appreciate the question, Mr. Duddy, but trust me when I say, we very much wanted it at a different spot and. I, I don't, I'm not offended by you pursuing it through other channels as to whether or not, but I trust Stephanie that. It was absolutely pursued and we got direction to move it where it is.
And then just ask a couple other quick questions?
Sure.
Prior, oh, this is still the same, or this, correct? Why would the engineering company change? Pickering of party. Hey, Lloyd, has that been with the lawyer? Order agent, yes, okay, so I would then change, we just made a business decision, change for the. That on, and we've done work with on in in the past, say, it's familiar with the township professionals. That we asked on to step in.
Well, are we able to get copies of the site-specific soil map, the P M, the PDF of the aerial photography map? How, how we get access to?
Uh, I, I'll give them to you if you have it, Mike. And then. What? If, if you put the map back up, there's two areas that say SWM. Can you explain what the SWM is or? And sewer waste management. Stormwater management, stormware management. Yeah, some of them, and that's the area that the waters that have been easily after heavy rains. Is that the entire area we, we'll be, uh, skewed to. Contain the gray, gray wood and these are very. These are going to be fencing around those areas, it's, yeah, very look like. Not again, it's just going to look better, but yeah, because we guys. Back to that point of, they, the Penn Dot, they, they, the preliminary, we got from. From two hundred and thirty eight, from eight hundred feet to fifty eight. And then, and they've also approved one three hundred seventy, I think, and clear line of sight.
That, that's not the Penn Dot requirement, that's this, we are back from the township, that's the main, we.
The most listed is Penn Dot issues. The claims.
They are, they are ready, uh, ready, yeah. But that's the township, not Penn Dot.
The seventy-five line, made of finer site is, is local. We're okay with that.
I, I told you, we, we had a spot, we wanted to put the access point, they told us where to put the access points, and then we have to look at the site triangle and make sure it works, so.
Just concerned about obviously the accidents, meaning house, Cheswick, and.
And I, and I don't know if you were, you were here for some of those meetings, you know, we've gone back and forth, because, you know, the, the view on the, the. Alignment of, with Meeting House Road, I wanted to give distance between Cheswick and this driveway, both on the. Alignment of with Meeting House Road, I wanted to give distance between Cheswick and this driveway, both on this side of the street. There's a, a school of thought that says by having offsetting access points, you then create confusion for the vehicles as they're coming out. Is he making a left or a right, what's that guy doing in that, and put, so. The, the feedback was Penn Dot wanted them across from each other, so now I'm looking at the driver across from me, and I can see what movement he's doing.
So. I, I didn't think anything had to prove that, but we were still up to figure. What made me. Road. Yes. And where do you feel better?
Ma'am?
Yeah, um, flooring down the sheet at fourth and D Y third, as, as a follow-up to the mountains. Um, I, I know it's a big utility hole. If we were to exit this development and they were right. So, last night I'm riding my bike, I said, oh wow, that's, that's right there, I went to Meeting House Road. And I looked across the bay, and to me, it looks like this utility. Is right in line with the new proposed room. So, and I also noticed along this side, between the new proposal and one thirteen, there's a series of utilities. So does that, I guess, have you walked that area, have you noticed that? What is the um required distance between your roadway, your new proposed road, and the utility?
Yeah, we have walked, so, depending on what we, if we need to move, we, we're gonna have to. And as, as we discussed, we don't have a choice. Chairman, point correctly. And that dictates where the driving is. We could have gone to the other side and not say, so, so he won't have. Or the drive, then. That's, that's sad.
So then, if, if I'm understanding you right. If you put in this development. And there's interference with the utility hole. You're the, the, you guys to develop. Incur the cost, relocate that hole, and cut down powder to the area?
Yeah. We have to work with the danger of things to make sure that, that, you're not gonna shut the bar myself, I mean, something.
You're gonna work.
We have, we have.
And who here?
Um, it's like the developer.
I think with the traffic comments, um, I believe Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but was there a request or suggestion for a left turn lane? Into the development previously?
Uh, they do have to submit a traffic study and determine any auxiliary lane turn warrants. Um, I don't believe this size of development is going to um meet the warrant for a turn lane, however, we expect in the future. Um, a longer term vision of one thirteen in this area is to consider a center-left turn lane. As you're aware, there's a left turn lane at the intersection of Maple and Paterno. Um, and then obviously, as traffic volumes have um. Grown over the last several years, um, I do think. A center-left turn lane is a infrastructure improvement that would benefit this area, so if anything, I would. Foresee down the road, a center-left turn lane that could potentially extend between. Maple and Paterno, as well as all the way to Landis, um, obviously, that would, that's a much larger project, it's a. You know, a project that has to be considered by the township and others. Um, but we would like this project to at least set their uh proposed improvements back, such as the sidewalk. Um, and their curb line, far enough to accommodate uh that potential for a future center-left turn lane. Um, and that's all we can ask of them at this point, until we review the traffic study, or they submit the traffic study. And demonstrate um or show that the turn lane warrants, if this development were to warrant a left turn lane, then it would be their responsibility to provide that. But given the size, I. I'm, I'm doubtful that it will, but we'll see, we'll have to look at it when it's submitted. So we're just planning for the future by asking them to set their improvements back far enough to accommodate any. Potential future improvement that would allow for a center-left turn lane.
Okay, my suggestion is that if you're asking the developers to set back their, their property, their building. I think again, the utility pool is going on that line. So it, it's almost to me, just, you know, riding my bus all around, it looks like the, we have to pay property on the other side. In order to accommodate, yeah, that's side of.
They'll just relocate within the way away. Okay.
Excuse me, in the rough. I'm walking through your parking lot from the other side of the thing there, I get approached by a fireman shaking me down about where I'm parked. But at the, at the township building, I can't walk through the township building parking lot? And not, and be approached by somebody wanting to know where I'm parking?
Just because the carnival started tonight.
Yeah, it's a street carnival. If he saw me over there parking, I'm okay with that. But I'm not approved, there's somebody approached, walking fifty yards to shake me down. About where I'm parking.
So we'll, we'll, we'll pass it on to the township manager.
That is totally unfair. We're just passing through. For that.
All right, thanks for making sure.
That fireman trolling the parking lot now? Not so good.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
Very Louis, uh, loser tribe. If you could load the map up, please. Um, I live at the bottom of this new cul-de-sac uh that we're looking at here. Um, I appreciate it pretty much, I really appreciate the high density burn and everything else that you're talking about on left. Um, I'm looking at traffic lights or car lights or whatever. Uh, shining from the driveway into my house, yeah, right there, is there any way to instead the burn and high density? Along the bottom for a little bit too?
That, that, that's exactly what we're talking, that's exactly what I was referencing, yeah, so when I was saying about the burn. I'd like to see it on the left-hand side going out to one thirteen, and then at the forty-five degree angle, extend it down until we get to the orange box. And that was the other reason why I asked about flipping the three and the four, because that'll give them enough room to put that burn in there, so you don't get that effect.
Thank you, yeah, I, I, when I heard, I was just curious, what size of, I apologize. Um, speed bumps? On that driveway or whatever, is that something that it is that the township's around?
I think sometimes we do, I usually leave that to the traffic engineer to be completely honest with you as to whether or not it's warranted. Yeah, I think we can still stipulate, we wanted, but I think on for twenty-six, you know, we typically do that, usually it's based on my intent, right? But.
Just throw it out.
Okay.
Uh, next question is. Uh, on the last. Uh. Whatever that we saw, uh, the concept going and everything else, yeah, uh, I believe these were going to be all two-story. Is the new concept also two-story?
Yes.
No, three-story?
No.
Thank you. And uh. Uh, another question on the latest shot. And that is on the turn, at that bottom of the turnaround, is there the. Distance requirements from a road to a primary like that?
Well, there's gonna be a setback.
Not for the, not for the, the old way, but uh, building setbacks are there.
Yeah, but I think even for the curb, don't you have a curb setback from the property line?
Yes, but, yeah, and it's, right now it's thirty-one feet from curb, it's set thirty-one feet for the property lines, that's. Means everyone.
Okay.
I remember when we had the. Uh, previous layout with the houses, we were looking at a forty-foot setback. And so the roads are at thirty?
Yeah. The intent is to, when you have a vertical building, you won't push it further away from the, so probably, that's, that's the reason.
And if, there's any way to set that back other than thirty-one? Your neighbors down here with pre-creating?
Think they have a burn and landscaping that's gonna provide the buffering that we're looking for there, you're gonna have to move that back anyway.
Well, that's why I wanted to get the three and four flood, if you need, then gives the whole, you do the driveway, if you're brought back, you create the space for the burn. And so one thing will follow another. All right?
Uh, last thing.
Last one. So last one, isn't it?
Um, I just like to break my whis, uh, concern on traffic. And pulling out one, one thirteen and, I didn't understand that sound here yet, but standard voice is concerned.
I think there was, there was a woman over here at the.
Deborah Helt, four seven five works, so. If you could pull this up, please, I would shave the map, it would go higher up. This map does not completely show where I live, it's going up a little more. Uh, because you're like, winter, then you go into the cul-de-sac, okay. Oh, oh. Yeah, I didn't know until then. Um, I like the fact that you're gonna put a four-foot burn. On the, I guess that's the west side. And I like the fact that you're gonna put it extending around the corner, so they don't get flashed in their. In their um. Family rooms at night when people are coming in. But, um, I live, again, four, seven, five works for the nest, I'm with drawing angle. And um. My lot is not as long as you will see, because the other ones on. Windsor? And so that, this perimeter of this uh spot is really close to not only my backyard, which is small. But then my house and my patio, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little higher up, I'm literally sitting on top of that fence line. I would greatly appreciate it if you would take into consideration, and I request it strongly. That you put the four-foot burn there along with my other neighbors whose property lines are not as deep. As the ones. On the other side, on the south side. Because we are not only, first of all, uh, the, the four-foot burn will help us, because the ground naturally slopes down, so we're sitting on top of that. And that bullfrog creek is very much part of what we see and what we experience, and when it rains. It is a little stream, it is more than a creek, it is a good gushing river at times. That burn would help for that, for water, it would help for visibility, and when you put that bike path in, because I was gonna ask about that, but you already answered it. You have a path, a bike, a five-foot path, bike path that ends up there, but not just tonight, you say you want to extend it. So it's literally gonna be fifteen feet, or where that red line is. It's gonna be there, yeah, right there, up further down, right there, that's where it's gonna be. And that's literally also gonna be right in my backyard. And I like people, but I like my backyard and privacy, and I come here because I like people and I'm concerned about me. But when I'm in my backyard, like I was, I just, I like my yard, I like my backyard, yeah. And so I would appreciate the four-foot burn, I think we should be all, all the way around there, with the trees and the bushes that stay green, totally agree with that. The wildlife needs it, the birds need it, because you're gonna tear down all those trees that are on top. Uh, of where it says, right through there and all the way along. Now, if you go further, if you bring this, that's. Question up as well with the burn. Who's gonna take care of that fence that's over forty years old, that is now the perimeter? And it's falling down and breaking apart in lots of spots. It doesn't belong to us, because it was part of the Durstheim development. Dr. Durstheim took care of that property line, and you did a good job, I have no complaints. But it's not that way now, it needs, it's in repair, it needs repair, it needs to repair, that's all I can say.
So there'll be a homeowner association, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be up to the developer, then they keep the fence, and if they keep the fence, then the homeowner association will be required to maintain it. So I, I hear your, your point about your, the view that you have, let, let's do it this way, let's, let's let the developer come back in the next meeting. Show the reconfiguration of the meetings, what that does to the cul-de-sac, the burn, the landscaping, and the path. Because I think we're gonna try to push the path back away from the property line, after we see where that path ends. Then come back and remind us, so okay, now figure out what the buffering looks like for the homes down where you are. But let's work through it that way, if you can.
The meadow or the bullfrog creek. At the stormwater management number two. You need to look at the elevation. Because that's higher. Than the previous. That's why new water runs back.
It's, it's. Placement and maintenance of the stormwaters dictated to in our Sado, our subdivision land development. We have a specific ordinance specifically for stormwater management, we'll have to create a BMP, which is a basic management plan. It's highly regulated, so where that ends up going, the capacity, the slope, everything about it, we'll go through multiple revisions and multiple reviews. But yeah, we won't let them put it up, up soon. I'll do two more, you're the first one.
I'm sorry, was it?
Okay, that little circle, that's our hole, and it's kind of major things, I know, we wanted to put. The shed near the fence, because it had been framed out for the previous owner. But we couldn't, because it has to be like fifteen or twenty feet from the property line. And yet I want to know how much. From our property line to that, that whole area, from that to the road. Like including anything that's in there, how far is that?
You know how wide that strip is before you get to your answer?
Goes to fifty-five feet.
Okay, and are those parking spaces there? Okay, so there's gonna be people parking, you're gonna be people parking, you have a narrow road, you have all these houses. And you're gonna have a lot of traffic, and I had shared this last time, even living at Cheswick, I was rear-ended. I've gone and helped four or five people. Who have been rear-ended at the Cheswick lot, you know, entrance. So my question is, and I agree with this woman on the far right, I don't know what your name was, I'm so sorry. But she had said, that just looks like way too much housing, and we're worried about traffic. Why are we trying to cram in so many houses? When we know there's gonna be more traffic? So reduce the amount, I mean, we know they're coming in, it's not like we're sitting here going, no, we can't put anything in there. We know they're coming, and I appreciate the work that people put behind it, I, the efforts I go into. But you gotta consider the picture, if you're gonna have that many cars, and I'm looking at the parking spots, let's just say it's Christmas. Where the heck are people gonna park? I should know, I know, and the last time the person who was said it, his answer was ridiculous, said, we'll just close the street, have a block car until I'm bored. I mean, that was like, really, that's what your answer is? So I'm looking at, you got six, and six, that just seems ridiculous to me, it almost seems like you're getting rid of, like, I don't know. Maybe four and four, I, of course, I think we should free, but move it over, make your road a little bit wider that way. So that the traffic, people will actually have room to be at little park, because they're gonna come in and people are gonna be parallel parking or trying to get in. And you go, oh, there's not that much trapping below me, I live in Cheswick, we're at the top. I can't tell you how many cars come in flying through there, and we have, especially since the other end, Windsor Drive is open. And the cars are like, beep beep flying, and it's ridiculous, and we have space, we have lots of space. So you're gonna cram in a road, parking spot, lots of people, I think this is a safe condition for this new development. I disagree wholeheartedly, and that's why I agree with that woman over there, because she said. I mean, it just looks like a congestion, congestion and attachment waiting to happen. So I personally would love it if you would come back. In that house, make that road a little bit wider so people can drive safely. And especially like late at night, I mean, again, I live in the second house there. The cars come flying through there, it's ridiculous.
These thirty feet wide roads which we're proposing are the same as Cheswick.
Right, but you're putting that many people in this one entrance.
And. Access to the back, which, that we have, which.
Right. Like I just, they were still flying, I would stand down there with my kids and, and yell at people, slow down, this is ridiculous. And let me listen to her, and be ready, and get my dog. And now, I get to, I agree with those way, like, that, those trees, whatever you call that thing. Because I don't wanna look out and see cars and see homes that are my backyard, like she, the woman over here said. You know, we built our, our backyard, we love it. That are my backyard. Like she, the woman over there said, you know, we built our, our backyard. We love it. Am I, do I miss Durstine? Absolutely. We're still friends with them. We go out to breakfast with them. You know, and it was great. But this isn't, this doesn't fit in with our community. And. I think you had said last time about making it look like it fits in and it like it flows together. I don't see this flowing together. So personally, I would like you to adjust it. I, it's just an opinion, but I figured, hey, it's worth a shot. Get rid of some of those ones at the top and move your road over a little bit for safety issues. For everybody on one thirteen, no matter who you are, traveling back and forth. That would help. Thank you.
That last one.
Thank you.
You're the last one.
Wouldn't you drive? I want to iterate about the parking spaces. I, this is the last time, this is the last plan. First of all, it's not enough. Secondly. Why can't there be parking somewhere else? People who live on Cheswick Drive that have been there for forty years. Don't still look at where our parks. I mean, that to me seems like there's gotta be a way to figure out to put the parking space somewhere else.
So.
Because on Christmas Day, that place is gonna be a nightmare. Still face the park. Things poor. And I'd like everybody who lives in Cheswick to slow down in Cheswick throw.
So, so, so we're gonna. We're gonna move, we're gonna move on. I've got other, um. Applicants that, that deserve their time. What I would bet he gets the sex. We'll probably have this plan in front of us every month or every other month, multiple, multiple times. There's gonna be lots and lots of reviews, lots and lots of iterations, lots of things we're gonna be asking. So, you know, I think it's great. Everybody came out and informed citizenry is really good. Continue to ask questions. Betty, I'll give you the last one. As, as long as there's a question in there somewhere.
Have told that the intersection of Meeting House. Cheswick. Uh, from another intersection that's down by Morris Road in Upper Manon. Um, a woman there had asked. Their township, how many accidents had been there that were severe accidents and what was quota? Be like a severe risk type thing. So I had called Officer with Dale over at this township police. And he said, the last four or five years, and I know. It's probably the only ones that are reported because there've been a zillion of them. He said there was at least five. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but that is supposed to be the quota of. What is supposed to qualify as as being a severe risk type of a intersection type thing. So. I'm still concerned the fact that, and I, somewhere along the line had some way waiver or approve or email or do something. Within that two hundred and thirty-six feet from eight hundred feet and a seventy-five feet line of sight. From the, wherever it was. Three hundred feet. I just, I lose my mind. I can't even believe it. Um. And I don't want a traffic light there. Said the day the traffic light comes, I added. No reason why there should be a traffic light. Uh, the other question is. There, the, the waste map, not the waste manager, the stormwater areas, uh. You're draining. I see the pipes coming off. Bus one thirteen coming down. Coming through the property and going where? Is it going underground? Is it gonna make contact with the soil or is it going through pipes?
So, good question. There is only an existing pipe. We have the headwork which goes to the south edge of the one thirty. We are just piping that section and it's shut into the stream which is lower side, which is the Wolford Creek. So it's going to. Continue underground up to certain point right behind those two houses and that's where we.
And, and this basin, it's just gonna be sitting there with water kind of thing? Is this how it's gonna be?
No, it's not a vacuum.
Okay.
It would be stream, it's a water, which is the requirement which Chad said that in practice this requires to. Properly made from the township boardings. Well, and that's what it's going to be. It's not going to be sitting water.
Uh, Wolford Creek. And a numerous. Lot of this land behind us and further out. It's nothing but a stream, a river, mud. Uh, I have a video of it. I have pictures of it. I have people to take pictures of their backyards along Windsor. It is a mess. Um, you can still have two sets of properties. On the border of where that wetland is actually classified, which we finally had to. Get somebody to actually classify it as a wetland. It's not fair to the public, to the people that are coming in there that have that much water coming. To this around the property. I don't understand how. With good conscience, you can build all the way up to the little line where it says wetland. I notice they don't have a patio there because it'd be going into the flood. So. I don't understand how in good conscience you can move it all the way out there. And not even think that that would be a problem. You know, if you moved it all the way up. You're gonna speed it up. I know what I'm just saying. That should be a problem. Um, and. Oh, the Bowman's Bill soil. Those all over there. This is never supposed to, should not even be.
Okay, but I'll move you along. What I would say is the one thing I would tell everyone is. Stormwater management is the one thing that you can feel development actually helps make better. We as a township can't just go in and start telling, uh, Dr. Durstine before what to change. During the development process, it's such a regulated element of land development in Pennsylvania. We get lots of opportunity to fix problems that have been hanging out there for years. So. Again, keep coming to the meetings. You'll hear a lot of things about how we address stormwater, how we move those things around. We'll get the fix on her.
Wetlands. That's gonna be an environmental issue. Think we were talking about that. Wetlands itself, it's not even supposed to be. Disturbed. I, I don't see how this is even going on. So you wanna do us a favor, eliminate some of these things. And properties and these, whatever they are, um, we don't need that many people in our backyard. We don't need anybody in this bathroom. Uh, we're not happy. But we're just gonna let you know.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
So, um, we're gonna move on to another popular one ninety-six Main Street and develop it. So. For those who wanna hang around, if you don't, please do so. Uh, was gonna ask, I assume you're.
You tell everyone it's the first night of the fair.
I heard you were buying, uh.
Plans, everybody. One.
So Rick, just to orient the audience, why don't you explain the conditional use hearing, what came out of that, what that constitutes and what it does not constitute?
So for those of you who aren't familiar with this property, my name's Rick Mast and I'm the engineer that prepared the plan. Um, one ninety-six Main Street is located at the intersection of Quarry Road. And, uh, Main Street or if something sounds like. Known as Main Street there. Um, it's catty cornered from the new wall law that was constructed a few years ago. And at the traffic light. So the property is a little over five acres. It's zoned, um, what's called residential office. And it is one of the few properties in that district, which is large enough to. House, what's called class three use. And the class three use is a little bit, uh, allows different types of uses that are, uh, then are available with some of the other R O properties. It allows mixed use, um. It allows certain non-residential properties. It allows certain drive-throughs. Uh, and it allows apartments. So the total proposal is. Um, a bank branch with a drive-up ATM and that would be the smaller building closest to the corner of Quarry Road and Main Street. Uh, there's a retail building which is opposite. The bank, basically all the fronting on Main Street. Uh, or at least, uh, next to Main Street. And then on the other side of the property to the left, as you're looking at the plan, there's four. Buildings which are apartment buildings. And it's a total of, uh, thirty-six. Units in those four buildings. So this plan was originally submitted, I think, uh, April of. Last year. I think I have that date correct. And it's, it has been a fairly. Involved and long process from where we started to get to this point. Uh, we've worked with planning commission, with the board of supervisors and the staff. Who arrived at the plan that you see here in front of you, um. That is with regard to. The type of buildings we're proposing, the number of units. The height of the buildings, uh, the position of the entrance roads, all of that was part of the discussion. We think we've listened to all the feedback we received pretty well and tried to address all of it as much as possible. Um, there are two access points on the road. The main access, which is a full access, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say. The main access, which is a full access, so it'll be let in, let out. Right in, right out. Is on Quarry Road. Worked with the township traffic engineer to try to situate that. At the best point of site distance, considering the curve. The traffic light and other, um. Physical features on the property. And that's, you know, the point of access that we arrived at. We also looked at the property across the street, which is a. A much larger piece of ground that's vacant. Uh, could be developed in the future. What if that developed? Where would it? Makes sense to have an access aligned with a future access. So all that was taken into consideration to come up with the access arrangement. We also looked at, uh, potential improvements to the road. Um, so we would be proposing. Widening and curving along Main Street, which is not today. Tying in the curving that exists in front of the daycare building that's adjacent to us. And continuing it, there is now a curve just at the intersection. So we're tying those. Say point A and point B. With curving. And then we're also widening and curving all of Quarry Road. So there's already been some widening done. It's a left turn lane on Quarry Road. There's a right turn lane on Quarry Road and a straight through lane of Quarry Road. Those improvements remained under this development as they are today, but would be widening the road more and providing a center turn lane until you get to the curb base. And that would allow some additional stacking at the left turn lanes of the light if it's ever needed. But also allow turning movements into our proposed access. The daycare center that's next to us has a detention basin. That's right there, right where the cursor is, that circle, dashed circle. That has a small pipe that's discharges into our property and then flows through the middle of our track. You can see those parallel lines. So we've kept that, um, open through our tracks. Basically, it's kind of a natural barrier between what we're calling residential and non-residential. Because I mentioned this is a class three use in the R O district. It requires another level of approval from the township. It requires a conditional use approval. So we had to have a traffic study prepared by a traffic engineer. We did some preliminary design. I mentioned working with the township traffic engineer also with the access. Uh, but we also had to, um. Conform with the ordinance requirements with this type of the use. We came before the planning commission for their recommendation. And then we went before the board of supervisors and held a public hearing. So that conditional use approval was granted. Um. So the use, the intensity and the arrangement of the buildings, that portion is approved by the board of supervisors. They did attach some conditions, um. That we adhered to landscaping ordinance, particularly. On the abutting residential properties, which we will comply with. They had some, uh. Architectural requirements for the buildings, um. Uh, some additional requirements for the bank, uh. Trying to make a cohesive development, make these buildings look like they belong together, even with the. Different uses. So we will comply with all of those criteria. We've now submitted for the next part of the approval process, which is land development. That's all the technical. Um, requirements that we have to meet. That's stormwater management, um. Uh, the design, the grading of the project, the landscaping, the lighting. So we're working our way through that process. We received the reviews from the township consultants. We discussed them last month at the planning commission meeting. Tonight, we're here for kind of a, just a narrow scope of discussion. For potential waivers of subdivision and land development ordinance. And also just to discuss the specific design of our detention basins. Two basins, uh, on this property. They're the two darker shaded areas on top of the plan. That one on the left that Mike was just circling and one on the right. The one on the left is for the residential portion of the property. Uh, for the most part, and the one on the right is for the two non-residential buildings. And. As Mattis was saying, the design detention basins has changed. Uh, over the past several years, particularly the last. Five years, let's say. And they typically are much broader on the bottoms and they're flat on the bottom. And then. The idea is to try to get a water quality component from the basins, not just control stormwater runoff. So each of these basins will, the, the entire shaded area is a, is a flat area. It's, um. Two to three feet of planting soil, which is designed to filter runoff as well as control it. It also gives you some additional stormwater management volume. Um, and then that is. After it's filtered through that soil media, it goes through an underdrain, slowly drains out of the basin. Um. The end result is they generally function better for stormwater control, but also for water quality control. And because they're so broad on the bottom, these basins used to be shaped like a cone. Now they're flat. You get a lot more volume with less depth. So these types of basins, the bottom is flat like that. Uh, they generally are much. Less deep than they used to be. So. Any questions about the general developments?
So I just want to focus, understand. Everything we went through before was in anticipation of a conditional use hearing. The supervisors control that process. They've branded the conditional use. Which stipulates what they can and cannot do. They still have to go through the technical land development. So some of what you've seen before will have to come back in front of us again because we say we were deferring that to land development, which is the process.
So. I've identified five waivers and, and not asking you for any decision or anything like that. It's just a discussion and to, for me to solicit some feedback. Um, and you may recall discussing some of this last month. So the first. Is with regard to parking lot perimeter landscaping. And this only applies to the interior of the site and, um, the. Parking perimeter is entirely, is required to be buffered with shrubs spaced at three feet. And we intend on doing that everywhere where the parking would be visible from the outside world, let's say beyond this property. The only area we're looking for relief is where there's a building or a wall. Between, or when that would be between the building and a wall, our buildings, not an adjacent building. Um, the one thing I did see in the subdivision and land development ordinance, if this was a non-resident property, that specifically is not required. But it doesn't have that same exclusion for residential property. We would anticipate landscaping the buildings themselves. So they'll have foundation landscaping around it. We're just looking to not put that kind of barrier between the sidewalk. And, and the buildings. It doesn't seem to make sense here. So where you see a gap, um, the building that's. Uh, closest to Quarry Road, right next to the basin, there's a gap there next to it, right there, Mike. So we would buffer that portion of the parking that's beyond the building there. Along the sidewalk. But not where the building is itself. So that's. Uh, to the extent it's required, we would be requesting that waiver, but. We wouldn't do foundation landscaping.
So Rick emphasized that you would be having ground covered grasses, mulch, or you.
That area would, would be a combination of grass, mulch and other landscaping, uh, next to the building. So.
So Rick, just speaking for myself and let the other members chime in if they really disagree. I'm, I'm okay with the waiver. I would still like you to calculate the required amount of landscaping buffering. And then figure out where else on the track it's appropriate to put it, because I think there's some. And then figure out where else on the track it's appropriate to put it, because I think there's some places that we need to be perhaps more intensive. And we can just reiterate it.
And we're willing to do that. That makes sense. Some of that may end up around the buildings too as well, just as.
I'm just thinking about like the end of the unit going out to Quarry Road. How do we soften that? You know, we've got out some other places where you're looking for, you know. Abutting adjacent properties and whatnot, so.
Right. There are, uh, just so you know, Mattis, there are buffer requirement, I'm sure.
I'm sure there, yeah.
Buffer requirements to the left, that's a medium intensity buffer and then low intensity across the entire back. We're not looking for any relief, many of those requirements. Um.
But the low intensity, so I'm thinking maybe we throw them.
That's, and we could do that, yeah. The uh, next is sidewalks. Um, and. We are, we are proposing a lot of sidewalk uh, throughout the community. We responded to the comments from the county, from. The township traffic engineer, the board and, and the other consultants as well. Again, it's sort of a technicality, but in this particular case where there's an embankment, we can't build the sidewalk all the way to the property line. Um, we're stopping just a few feet short. You can kind of see the white gap on some of the town pipe right there. Same thing I just on Quarry Road. It was, it was a comment in Stephanie's letter. Um. We would build it as far as we can without having to go into neighbors' property to build it. That's all. But we're only talking about a couple of feet in those instances. And then the only other place we're not providing sidewalk is along the left side of the entrance driveway. We have sidewalk on both sides and everywhere else. Left side as you're coming in, right side as you're looking at the plan. Right there. Uh, the theory there is we have provided connection points from the corner of Main Street and Quarry Road. You can see right there, you just passed it uh, right there, coming into the bank. And there will be sidewalk coming all the way across within the site. And then we've also added sidewalk on the. Um, the opposite end of the frontage on Main Street next to our driveway. Uh, which isn't on this plan, but we have added it in response to the comments. So again, it's kind of a, almost a technicality in terms of a waiver, but.
So it's, it, it's the daycare that's further east, right? That's the property?
That's the daycare right next to us.
They don't have a sidewalk, but.
They do not. And neither does the property on Quarry Road adjacent.
Right. That's just a residential property.
Right.
But I think on Main Street, we want to try and get as much. Oh, yeah, every time. I see people walking down the street carrying bags like on the side of the road. Um, Rick, didn't we also, besides the sidewalks, didn't we talk about a path?
We did.
Out the back.
So. Right there, we, we've on a, on our latest plan, uh, have. Done away with the driveway connection, now showing a future path connection in that location. That was in response to our discussion last month.
Let me do some easement growth township.
Somewhat.
Easement for the township, is that what it is?
Yeah, we would, we would provide an easement for public access to that if it, if it got built.
Although. If that, could that's also, the property next to you, which has the daycare on it, is as deep as your current property.
It is. There is.
Point if they got developed, once again, that's a good rear connection vault. So I don't know if I want to give that up. Road easement rather than. I, interacting the blocks is always great. That spot though, you, you know, if you said, okay, now whatever goes up going in there, I'm now going to have the exit out into the middle of the.
The neighborhood.
Neighborhood, right. That, that starts to get kind of all.
And they are.
Have ease and we can do it if we wanted, but.
Right.
And they are adding the driveway connection up from.
Yeah, right. Possibility. Good. Um.
Can we talk about the sidewalk waiver? The, the one at the intersection that Mike was pointing to? Are you asking for a waiver? I'm talking about quarry and Main Street. And Stephanie, if you're still there, I wanted to know if you commented on this too. Are you asking for a waiver not to put a sidewalk to the uh, quarry road, Main Street intersection? You're crossing right over.
No, I'm, I'm only asking, the waiver is only for that couple of feet.
Oh, just only each property? But I thought Mike was pointing his cursor up at the intersection. Could you add a connection to the intersection? Stephanie, do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, I do. And I'm, there is a crosswalk there and I can't, I just can't recall. Rick, is there an existing ramp at that location? Today?
Yes, there is. We are proposing to tie into that. Our sidewalk along the road will tie into that landing that's there. There's already a pedestrian.
But get across Quarry Road too is what I'm asking also.
It's a second.
For, for connection.
No, um. That one.
Go ahead.
That one, there's not sufficient uh, room to do it. So that will have to wait for the alabot time to. When mainland point and the traffic signal was designed and permitted. We did look at that pretty carefully to see if we could actually get all four corners. Uh, with, with crosswalks and landings, but that one couldn't be done without additional right of way. That point they weren't willing to do it, so.
You can't plan for it on your side?
Um. When you say plan for, what do you mean?
Well. But if you can't, at least grade for it.
Rick, we had apron or, or curb cut for a crosswalk.
Recollection is we, we're not able to put the curb cut or the ramp in without the crosswalk. So we couldn't. Put the crosswalk in because it wasn't adequate right away for the landing opposite quarry road. So we were told not to do anything there.
That, that, yes, that's correct. Uh, but I do think what Michelle is asking, and I would agree with her, that if there is any grading along that frontage at the. Corner that you could do now. To. Help improve the installation of a future ramp. And I'm gonna, I can't write on here, but if you look at the um. Kind of like where the leader is that says radius equals twenty five feet cord. If you kind of go horizontally out. To that, in that general air towards Main Street, the other way, other way. Right in there, right? You're gonna need that ramp is gonna fit right there in the right of way. And would go across Quarry Road. So just, I think. Think, Michelle, what you're asking is just make sure that area is graded properly. There's nothing in the way there. There's nothing that would preclude. A ramp from being installed in the future. When, if and when the property across the street from Cor- on Quarry Road ever comes in for development. And that fourth crossing would be able to be made. Is that?
Yes, that's what.
Okay.
So is this, just, just for my own indications, this is kind of like what we're doing with uh. Always going insurance and the post office will come back and redesign that intersection as each piece sort of fills in and continue to go back and revise. Because when, when the alibi tracks develop, they're going to say, well, I can't go across. There's nothing to go across to, but we, we can go back to.
Well, no, they're, they're gonna have to though. They're gonna have to be able to put the ramp on their corner and they would have to be able to come in and make the fourth crossing because. There's right of way there for that to be done. So there's really no. There's no, no way they won't be, they wouldn't be asked to do that.
The mainland point went through the pendup process and everything. I mean. They had to go to neighboring property and buy additional easements. So they, they did everything they could do basically. So. It is all set up actually, except for the, the alabot corner, but we will look at grading.
It's similar to what we required at the H holding, so I want to hold that truck um. Large truck that we were said, said to do the grading to prepare for your secrets. Mm-hmm.
Um, stormwater, there's a minor stormwater waiver. We have two um, stormwater pipes. These are privately maintained. One is adjacent to the bank. You can't see it on this plan, but basically it's between the parking area and the bank. Uh, just a lawn inlet and one is adjacent to one of our apartment buildings. And it's just an area that needs to be drained. And we're proposing less than an eighteen inch pipe. We had shown twelve inch. Michelle's recommendation was to go to fifteen, which we will do. Uh, but it's still a waiver technically, because the minimum pipe size is eighteen. It's fifteen inches, way more capacity than we need, but it's, it's, this makes sense for those locations. And then the last waiver, and it kind of ties in with the whole basin design. Put up that detail. We, we had some discussion about the detention basins. And slopes on the detention basin and you can keep that one up first. And based on that discussion, I did revise the basin somewhat. Um, so this is the basin that serves the. Um, non-residential portion of the property. That's the bank building on the right. And the landscaping that you see is actually what is required in terms, it's a mixture of ornamental trees, uh, shrubs. And there's trees required along the frontage, uh, street frontage and driveway frontage as well. So I've revised all the slopes that drain into the basin. Uh, to four to one or five to one. So that driveway from the um, drive through. Which is curved and it won't be pedestrian traffic there, but from there. Down into the basin, that's between four and five to one. So that meets the ordinance. The entirety of the inside of the basin is four to one, which meets the ordinance. The only relief we're looking for is. To deal with the grade as it gets down to Quarry Road. If you're familiar with the property, there is quite a bit of grade on Quarry Road. So that's the portion. We're asking for three to one slope right there. Um, so that'd be between the berm. And, and the road and the entrance. Um. Again, that's a waiver that we've gotten with other basins. It's not that un. Uh, common and it's easily mowable, um. Particularly in this case, when you don't have commercial mowing equipment. Um, so it's not a matter of. You know, can it support grass or anything like that? It's not that steep of a grade. But it does require a waiver. This four to one is the maximum.
I, I have no objection with that. The only question I have is, um, did you check your slope of your trail on that side? Right, the trail.
Sidewalk?
By the sidewalk, thank you. Yes.
I did.
Yeah, I'd have no objection to that.
So do you submit it with the water?
Not yet.
We will with our next admission. I have one, but. We didn't spit it formal. Um, and then the next basin, I also reached behind somewhere. And this one is one closer to the apartments. And I think there was some concern because we had a slope really leading from the units into that basin and. I should point out, both of these basins are very shallow. Um, the total depth of this basin is three feet. But the actual water depth will be even less than that. Um, again, that goes to having a broad. Bottom. It really gives you a lot of volume uh, for the depth and that's, that's a benefit. So what we've done here is we added a three foot landscape wall around the full perimeter. Adjacent to the unit, so that all the area between the unit and the basin. Uh, will be flat. Um, and then we're going to add a fence to that same area. So there'll be a fence that will prohibit access um, to the basin. Uh, plus the wall, plus all the landscaping that we are going to install on the unit side of the fence. And then I redesigned again, all the inside slopes of the basin will be four to one, which meets the ordinance. And we're only asking for relief on the down slope uh, of the basin, the outside of the basin. And again, that's only three feet of height. Um, that would be like between the sidewalk posed along Quarry. And our basin.
So I think that was your question.
Yeah.
The type of fence we're thinking of is at this point, a. A white three rail vinyl fence, but with wire mesh that would prohibit anybody from going through it. That would be a fence that's. Basically for horses, so it's substantial in terms of its strength. It's not, it's not a, uh, I mean, when somebody hears vinyl, they're thinking it's flimsy. It's not going to be flimsy.
Well, I'm more concerned with toddlers.
Yeah. Right, so the wire will be the barrier for that, so.
Rick, I have a question. If that's a wall along the building, the two sides of the building, or retaining wall in the ba- in the basin, is that a wall along?
That's a landscape wall, three feet high. Yes, the entire length. And it's somewhat of a feature as well. Um, and then the fence will be on the unit side of it. So. You won't be able to get to the wall uh, from the unit.
Am, am I correct that if you made um, the slopes on the opposite side of that wall? Three to one rather than four to one is what I think you're proposing, that it wouldn't significantly, significantly. Increase the distance between the building and the detention basin?
It would not make a big difference. And in my mind. You know, i- if it was thirty feet, fifteen feet, sixty feet. You're still gonna have to keep kids out of it somehow with fencing or, or monitoring as well. Um. So now it wouldn't make a significant difference. If I was a parent, my biggest concern would be the roadway. Really, from what's there.
Rick, what's the crosshatch element I saw on the other basin as well?
That's the emergency spillway area. It's still grass. Uh, but it's a low area of the berm. So if there's ever an overflow, it passes through there first. Conservation, Conservation District has got pickier with them where they now want that to project all the way down the berm as well. Just kind of disappear on the berm itself, but now they want it to follow all the way down to the bottom. That's why it looks kind of extended. Uh, but when it's built, you won't really notice it. It will be green like everything else. It'll just be a little bit of a depression.
Are you eliminating the basements on some of those buildings?
The apartment building on the left, none of, that building will not have basement anymore. The building on the right, as you're looking at this plan, still has a basement. That's a walkout situation. The grade allows that, but that is above the basin, above the bottom of the basin. There's not going to be a water issue there.
Great, thank you.
That's it, that's all I have is.
It'll be two stories with a walkout basin. So from the road, it'll look like three, because it's two plus a walkout.
Yeah, um, that basin actually is gonna go a long way towards buffering that building because of the grade. From Quarry Road, it's kind of a natural berm with the landscaping and the, the height of the berm.
I was just curious. I know when we were here last time, someone had mentioned. Kids that are going up and down Quarry Road lately with whatever they have, skateboards or whatever plates. I'm just thinking to myself, if we have a whole bunch of townhouses or apartments over here. And you have a super walla over there um, across the way, it gives a little bit more of a inviting. Reason for them to come on quarry roads, maybe. You know, go to the walla or something, just really afraid that if we don't have any kind of. Sidewalk or clearance or anything in that area, I can see that really being.
There should be sidewalk the entire length of this development along.
Thing.
Both roads. Now, now both roads.
We want to take some questions regarding this right now.
Yep.
I'll answer some questions about the other development.
I wrote to Mike a couple of times. He said, you know, thank you, planning commission. It's extremely busy. I can't believe how many developments. Wanted, and before I came to the first meeting, I didn't realize that the mission volunteers do, so. Very, very much appreciated truly. And it's amazing you can keep up with it. Um, my general question is. We, a lot of us here for the Cheswick, have more comments. What's the best way to pass them on rather than wait till the next meeting? Can we email somebody just to either ask questions or make comments before the next meeting?
So I, I, I wouldn't endorse the idea of doing Q and A via email, because that's, you know. The, the whole point of this is that it should be a public meeting and a public comment. So then you get ourselves in situations where, well, I, somebody told me and then that. So that, that does become problematic. Um, my, my understanding is you guys are doing a good job of organizing yourselves. So. If you guys wanted to assemble concerns or comments and, and submit them into the township. So that we have a sense of what are some of the topics that are of interest to you. I, I. I don't think we have time to go through and answer each question in kind. But I certainly appreciate if there's things that you guys sort of want to make sure that we're aware of and thinking about in advance of the next one. But I think it's appropriate that we do everything publicly.
With twenty with twenty minutes typically with this speech agenda for the item, I don't base on what you're following.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm trying to manage the rights of the developers who have a right to develop, the rights of the applicants who are told well in advance what kind of day we're going to be on and as well as the rights of the public to be able to address it. If this was the last meeting where we were doing a vote around final approval, we probably let the dialogue go on. We're going to get to see that plan that we talked about earlier multiple times. So we'll have lots of opportunity for lots of folks to cycle through. Sorry, I think you had your end.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, Bob Kern, one twenty-five, where are you doing? Um, I I'm just curious. I haven't been here before, currently the other presentations. Uh, so these are two-story buildings, somewhat walkout basements. Are they two or three bedroom units?
Uh. Do you want to break down the? Break down, but they're two bedroom units.
Two bed, two bedroom. Okay. And and again, I'm just curious.
Uh, we said that the walk, the walkout basements cannot be a separate unit.
So I did read that it couldn't be like a bedroom.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that makes it nine units per building?
Uh, there are two ten unit buildings and two eight.
Got it. So curious.
Uh, I should have mentioned uh that one of the conditions um that the board supervisors placed a proven condition was that the non-residential portion could not be converted to residential.
So you'll come back with a waiver letter?
Yeah, in our next submission, um, uh, we'll include a waiver letter with it as well.
Is there anything else? All right, great.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, and we have another planning module, seven eighty-five, Kressman?
Yes, um, I I can handle this one. I think unless that I don't think you have to say.
Comment so I can leave.
Sure.
Somebody mentioned future vision. I think it was Stephanie mentioned vision and lived here for eighteen years. I'm just wondering, what is the future vision for Lord Southard and Harley'sville? It seems like every square end is being built up. So that's what I'm wondering. Is that the plan to build up every square?
Yeah, of course not. So, you know, there's a concrete heads plan. There's a couple of different documents. I encourage you to come to the township building and ask to get copies of or take a look at. I would also recommend that you get a copy of the zoning map. The zoning map helps lay out sort of where we want development to occur and where not to occur. So, you know, very much we're looking at trying to make sure we develop intensities along the main corridors, primarily somebody town like. As you radiate out from that, you'll start to see like R one A, which are two, two acre minimum lot sizes. That's also the part of the township that's not necessarily served by public order and public sewer. So the good news is we're a great place to live. The bad news is the secret's out. So a lot of people want to come here. You know, it's got great schools, great neighborhoods, beautiful scenery. Yeah, great trails, great trails. Yeah, which is uh attractive to people. And and people like the idea that we have villages, right? So that you get to go downtown and go, you know, eat, shop and things like that. So, you know, there's very much a vision of let's let the high intensity things occur there and then become more rural as you radiate out from that.
Thank you very much.
Vision for man and one that challenges me, um, I'm Claire Warner and the planning commission. And just so you know, the county is currently working on updating the comprehensive plan for the Indian Valley. Lower South is part of the Indian Valley. So in addition to the vision for the township township, there's also a vision generally for the entire Indian Valley and so lower South is part of that. And there are designated growth areas and designated areas of preservation regionally.
Okay. Alright, thanks very much.
Planning module, I see Rick is still here. Do you want to handle that?
Uh, the Tuckles subdivision, you probably remember, um, it was basically three lots, one existing house in the front, two new flag lots in the rear. Uh, both planning has recommended approval. The board supervisors also gave it final approval. Uh, we thought the sewer aspect was going to be simple, but it turned out not to be as simple as we hoped. Uh. Testing had been done years ago. The health department did require some of that to be redone. And because of the weather, it just was a delay getting it done. That's all been done, um, been approved by the health department, submitted to the county um for their approval. Now the planning module, uh, because it's on lot septic, it's still a what I would consider a major planning module comes before the planning commission for recognition. In this case, a little bit different because the plan had already been approved. It's just the planning aspect. No public sewer uh in that area. And could there be the sign off on something again?
Right, that would be the motion again to, uh.
I'll motion that one minute.
Thank you, Scott. Get the sound second. Thank you, John. All in favor?
Alright.
Close. Thank you. Alright, Claire, county, you've been planning here.
So, um. I see. And John sent out the latest draft for Stephanie's show to review. And since then, I received feedback from Stephanie some of the draft village district. So I wanted to get the planning commission depending on how I should play tea with it. Um, so there are a few comments that she made that I could go through and address with my thoughts would be in response to that. Um, I could also go through and summarize the the district overall. I remember the last major mission meeting, there was some consideration that John and he wasn't he wasn't at the last meeting, is not able to well, so not sure if that's not is a concern because of the evening.
I would like John's input, um. Who's it have field township to second up this time? Looked at everyone else. I'm I'm happy to move forward or happy to.
I've got, I've got you, John.
So at this point, Claire, I think what I I would be helpful is let's let's get John to weigh in. Um. And you've also, you've gotten, has this gone through legal review with with solicitor? There was one term, I know, a while back to this.
Coffee with basically peanut version of the peanut butter. Not intuitive edits, but just any edits. So, um, probably would want one final pass with him, is that correct, Mike? So this was.
And and as far as I'm concerned, like, I think we beat the frontage occupation calculation for that. Like, you know, like that, I feel like that's that's good. The density and bonus options is the part that I think where John would probably be the best. He tends to catch where we've got duplicity there. Um, so that will be one that that I'd say that we should should focus on. Other than that, I mean, I think just that, a legal review, and I think we're almost there. Anybody else?
Oh, um. I guess we'll wait until the next meeting. Finally, I think, should I send it to the fourth year?
I think so. Why is it, no?
Yeah, well, I was just going to say because he reviewed it once, didn't he, Claire?
Yeah.
So maybe after all the revisions are done, that happens to take a little bit.
Just trying to keep it moving.
Yeah.
Lots to do, but that's fine.
Yeah, I I agree. I would like to get moving as well. So whatever I can do in the meantime to keep it progressing forward, that was great. Um, there's kind of put on pause until we hear back from other viewers.
Building orientation, we went through that. We did the test days. We've done the building length and tried to figure out that. So I I think we've worked through most of it. Blank walls cannot face the street. Mike wanted that one. I don't know why you want that.
It's related to drive-through facilities. So included for the drive-through, uh, in Chalde here, so she wants to. Um. So it it mentions that they're strictly prohibited, they're permitted for only for certain uses, so financial institutions, but it's not explicitly prohibited for all other uses. So that might be something to add that drive-through facilities are from are prohibited for any other use besides the ones that are explicitly listed. That was one of her comments. Also, there were, um, she mentioned that the township should consider revising the standards and criteria that are included for the drive-through facilities. I wasn't here exactly on what if there were specific revisions that she would recommend for the drive-through facilities for pharmacy.
And and if you're, and if you're going to try to. And if you're going to speak, help me understand why Stephanie, you're suggesting drive-through for a pharmacy, but why not food?
That was, that was the discussion we had previously, um. Uh, drive-through facilities were not.
Yeah.
And, um. I think because those uses. I know, I want to remember this correctly, so, um. Why do we limit it? I think the idea was that we don't want them to overrun the top, the village just. Ideally, you wouldn't have drive-throughs to leave in in the village context. And yeah, it's not possible in a lot of areas too because of the size of the lots. Um, I think it felt a little bit too restrictive to prohibit them across the board. So we have these would be used for, they would be faster. Um, and if there are like fast food establishments and, oh, it's um, with fast food establishment, I think the form of the building would generally be acceptable, except that the drive-through facility that makes it in environment. So in certain areas you might have, like with the New Mainland development, you have some fast food restaurants and drive-throughs that wouldn't be appropriate in district, but the restaurant itself would probably be okay if it's designed. That's my understanding.
So let me ask a question. I think there's um two.
Well, the one sample noise it was Burgies. The carpet uh flooring. They wanted to redevelop that, but one of our pet pilots. They could say, okay, I'm not going to CVS on the corner to drive through, but I'm not going to put Popeye's there on the corner when to drive through.
So so where I was going with it is, do we really want drive-throughs in village commercial or do we just say no? And the two, the two pre-existing conditions are, you know, insane.
Yeah, that's what I would say. Yeah. Enforce the drive-throughs out further out of the village, the edge.
Yep.
So just get rid of drive-throughs completely? Is that, is that the preferred?
I was Dave Bo's pondering, I could see.
Yeah, drive-throughs in village.
We're saying no drive-through. We have the Dunkin' and we have the Bang, you know, they they wouldn't be forced to close because they're pre-existing, but, you know, I'm thinking about like. They are, but the stuff where where the, well, even Burgies is you want to do that. Or, you know, you could have yourself a Starbucks, like you got Dan and, uh, and well, we have Starbucks go down to the mixed use area or somewhere down there and build that, build it out there, not the village center. Doing that, do we agree?
Yeah.
So why don't you, we'll, we'll get another look at this when John's back next month. But yeah, why don't we go ahead and put that in?
Okay. Um, the other question was about shared parking, um. And, uh, um, there's a section and there's code currently on common parking section one fifty-four, one hundred. Um, and that basically is when you get a parking reduction for having a shared parking lot. Um, so I don't think we ever discussed that really. I think the idea of the bonus for a shared driveway is that you would just be limiting the number of curb marks in the village. Um, and we're going to discuss the parking reduction option, so, um. I hadn't considered that as part of the the bonus. Off on that.
That that's a current requirement, a current uh allowance, right, Claire? Like I'm thinking of, yeah, like the Shahada development that was in today, they were allowed a bonus because they are sharing a driveway between two lots.
Correct.
So, so I'm just thinking out loud. In the village commercial, I think you're going to have lots of situations where someone's having a hard time advancing a development plan because they're not going to be able to find enough parking. And the shared parking provision is what will allow them to do.
Right.
Why are we then giving them an additional bonus, which is just going to exacerbate the math problem further? So we're alleviating or remedying the problem that they have by allowing for the shared parking. I think that's the relief that they deserve, but I don't know why we have to give a bonus of what the definition.
I think the bonus would reflect the fact that you want to have less parking if you can, even if they could fit all the parking. If they can share the parking with somebody else, we've got less parking. I think that would be the only thing you'd want to encourage that.
So, yeah, so the way it is now is we get the bonus for having shared facilities, but not the reduction. So you're saying that that's okay. I think the shared facilities there and the shared access, but just not, not the reduction.
And 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 I get your point, but I'm thinking most of the stuff on the residential side of Main Street, so like across from the hardware store, they don't have nearly enough parking. They've got to do shared parking if you want to put any kind of an office. Everything on the other side, you know, the hardware already doesn't have enough parking, so they were going to push, you know, they're going to want to share at some point just to alleviate. There's probably a couple in there like Chantilly Forest and stuff where they could develop it and probably have enough parking on site. There's probably only a handful of, yes.
That would be my opinion.
I don't even think when when you guys did uh Citizen Berries and that building next to them, that could take advantage of shared parking. Before that old whatever church building, they have no parking at all.
Yeah.
They can take advantage of shared.
But I don't know that one of them said, okay, now go.
Okay, the final, the final comment from Stephanie is, um, on the, there's a section, um, um. Which is, uh, limiting the driveway width to twenty-four feet. Um, for and one driveway, one driveway per lot footage. And she suggests that this might want to, this possibly should be in the saddle instead of zoning so that if they needed to request um, a variation that would just be a lever. I agree with that. Claire, thank you. You did a great job.
Right, um, we shouldn't do a juror. Help save. All in favor?